All right, welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 2nd, 2021. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, including an address, and the name of any organization that they may be representing unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone who wishes to speak on an item on the agenda should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by sedating their name, address, organization, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. We also have our public hearing on the city budget. So what will happen is we'll have a traditional City Council meeting. We will adjourn for that, and then we will open back up for the public hearing on our city budget. All items will be called together for the city budget, and then we're going to have a public hearing on all items in Section 11 and 12. If you wish to speak on the budget, you must sign in. If you do not wish to speak, you don't have to sign in. Same thing with the address requirement remains. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or the group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Please indicate if you are using Star Trans for transportation so we can get you first. Speakers will generally be called in by the order in which they are assigned in. Those using public transportation may be called before you. To allow everyone an opportunity to speak, you will have a maximum of five minutes to make your comments, and questions from City Council members do not count as part of the five minutes, and you may only speak once. Please try to avoid repeating points made by other speakers, and please consider having a spokesperson for your group, and your group can stand to be recognized. If you sign in but change your mind, you may take your name off the list. Supporting letters and documents can be given to the city clerk. If you have a cellphone, please use the silent mode and make any calls in the hall. I'll read that list again before we start our public hearing on the city budget. So first, we have our traditional City Council meeting. We're going to go through that, and then we'll open up the public hearing for the budget, and all items will be called at the same time. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, which is not today but will be next week, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. So if you're here for an open mic night, that should be next week. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business on our agenda for August 2nd, 2021 is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak on any of these items for 1 or 2? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on.
We can vote on our consent agenda. Item 1A is setting the hearing date of Monday, August 30th, 2021, at 5:30 PM to assess the cost for inspections and snow and ice removal off sidewalks on four properties totaling $1,392.63 during the 2020-2021 winter season, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 2, Items 2A through 2D was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Next up is Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. Item 4A is application of Cosmic Eye Brewing LLC doing business as Cosmic Eye Brewing for a special designated license to cover an irregular-shaped outdoor area measuring approximately 75 feet by 120 feet at 6800 P Street, number 300, on August 6th, 2021, from 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM, and August 7th, 2021, from 12:00 PM through 12:00 AM.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, guys.
How's everybody doing today? I'm here in favor of the SDL application for Cosmic Eye Brewing. I am Sam Riggins, owner, founder, all that stuff of Cosmic Eye Brewing. My home address is 5716 Lennox Avenue here in Lincoln, 68510. Do you leave anything out there?
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Raybold?
Could you, Mr. Riggins, could you tell us a little bit about the special events that you have planned?
Sure. So we kind of have two separate events for the weekend. On Friday night, we are doing an event called Kegs for the Cure. This is a donation-only event where homebrewers bring in beers to sample. All the money for it goes to cancer research. It's not really my event, we're just hosting that. We're expecting about 150 people for that event. We'll have, I think, 30 different homebrewers bringing things in to sample. So primarily, that'll be what's going on in the parking lot on Friday night. And then Saturday, from noon to midnight, we're having just some flex space outdoors for our anniversary party. We're setting up a beer trailer out front. We'll have multiple food vendors, and we're really just using it as a buffer for capacity for our space that day, so, yeah.
Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Riggins, for coming forward.
Yeah.
Just a little curiosity, it says irregular-shaped outdoor area.
Yeah.
Irregular-shaped, what is...
Well, we're just kind of catching around the building, so it's really, you know, if you make a rectangle and drop it in front of the building, it just catches a chunk of our front door, basically.
Okay.
And it tombstones out just a little bit in the parking lot, you know.
Basically just...
Parking counts and all. You know, we had to kind of keep it as contained as we could to not take up too many parking spaces, so we just kind of had to make it a little bit goofy to take up six spaces instead of like 25 or 30, so, yeah.
I was expecting a nice rectangular right in front of the building.
Yeah, we'll just be right out our front door in the parking lot.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thanks, guys. See you Friday.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Item 4A.
Second. Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 5 is ordinances and related resolutions for action only. Item 5A is appeal by Royce Mueller of Planning Commission Approval, a special permit 14003A to allow for the expansion of the existing special permit for planned service commercial to allow for an additional approximate 21,000 square feet of commercial floor area on property generally located at South 70th Street and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, I'd like to have planning. Come on up, Steve.
Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street.
Two questions. One, we passed last week an amendment to this about the screening to be able to have it on either public or private.
Correct. Well, correct that there was a motion, I'm not sure if it was approved.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It was passed, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we do another amendment, would that motion be, and it's probably for our counselor, would it be a motion to amend number one, or would we have to say motion to amend number two? Mr. Christie?
I think it would be number two. Oh, it's Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I think it would be a motion to amend number two.
Okay.
Since we have a motion to amend number one, whatever, I will double-check with the clerk to make sure that there was a vote on the motion to amend. I don't know if it was carried over for vote today.
For the current motion that we're talking about now?
Yes.
No, we didn't vote or introduce that last week.
Okay.
We only had the motion to amend number one that was adopted the last hearing.
It was adopted.
It was adopted. It was voted on.
Motion to amend number one was. But this one currently, the one that's being introduced, was not. We did not make it.
The motion to amend number two.
Number two. We're fine. Okay.
Can I introduce it?
Yeah. I'd like to introduce then a motion to amend number two.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. Basically, it's just putting a height restriction of 25 feet on any buildings on this property. And basically, so they can't go really, you could almost go two-story with the 25-foot. We just don't want a multi-large-story storage units to be put up at that spot. Now, we understand that they're not planning on doing that, so shouldn't be any harm at all at this point, but in the future, something may come along where 25 years from now, they could go ahead and do a height, and then there'd be a height restriction on the property.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I have a question for planning. It's being rezoned H4, correct?
Correct.
And so what is the maximum allowable height in an H4-zoned area? And depending upon their use, obviously, they're a storage unit facility.
Yeah, the height limit doesn't matter in regards to the use. Each of the districts, the height is just basically per that zoning district. And even though I've been with the department a long time, I've learned my memory on exactly what is the height limit for all of our 27 different districts is never correct. So in the H4, it is 55 feet is the height limit today.
Okay, and then Councilman McGinnis has suggested 25 feet, but if the owner has committed to building only a single story, what is that height customarily for a single-story storage unit?
Well, yeah, under 15 would certainly probably be a pretty safe estimate. I don't know exactly if self-storage buildings are 12 feet or 13 feet or 11 feet, but under 15 would certainly be that. With 25 feet, maybe you could get a two-story self-storage. Most of the self-storages that we have seen fall in one category or the other. They're either one-story, or they're four or five if they go to all the trouble of doing multi-story, so more than likely, this would result in just a one-story. And if for some reason in the future, this site was cleared off at the self-storage, and they wanted to go above the 25 feet should it pass, they could come back through the process and show you, here's our new plan, and make their case for taller heights.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Hendrickson, with this motion to amend that would limit it to 25 feet, I would like to sort of walk through a little bit of a what-if. The owner has said they would commit to a one-story only, and right now, they have a one-story facility there, and though I haven't measured it, it looks like it's about 12 feet tall. And so this would allow them to actually go 25 feet tall if this was passed. Yes?
Correct, and there's no story limit on it either, so it would allow two stories, or depending on the grade, you could sneak in three stories under 25 feet. That would seem to be a little hard to do, so it's probably going to be two stories with a 25-foot.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I'm just trying to pay attention to what Mr. Mueller had asked in his appeal, which was to maintain a one-story building, and the owner has said he will do that. All right, thank you.
Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up on Councilwoman Washington's. The amendment would limit it to 25. Right now, it's currently eligible for 55?
Correct.
Okay, this would limit it. And my other question is a little bit weirder. I'm familiar with a self-storage unit on North 84th Street that's a multi-story. Is this a common occurrence in Lincoln? Have you, can you, from your memory?
I know we have one in the downtown B4 area that went into an existing building and rehabbed it for multi-story. Another one in North 84th Street. I think we probably have one or two other ones that are approved, so it's not an uncommon occurrence. We've had some talked about in the 46th and O area, which by there would have been just by right. You do have some self-storage back on the 45th Street, kind of a back-behind target, so to speak, in that area.
Yeah.
So it is becoming a more common occurrence because we're seeing also a lot more indoor heated and cooled storage is becoming more popular.
Climate control.
And so I think when you're doing climate control, looking at multi-story, because you're often looking at smaller items versus you have a huge storage unit with lots of furniture and things, you know I have some very specific things I want to store, I think we will probably see more multi-story self-storage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Did you want to follow up with anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Seeing no further comments or discussion, may I please do a roll call on the motion to amend?
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
Now, back to the main motion. We had that moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Schob? Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, okay, go ahead and take it away.
I'm up, right?
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 5B is change of zone 21016, application of Tagle Hill LLC from R1 Residential District to H4 General Commercial District, property generally located at South 70th Street and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I would please ask for a roll call vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Our next section is ordinances, Section 6, ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. Annexation 21003, application of Roca Bee Holdings LTD to annex approximately 48.06 acres, more or less, including the adjacent right-of-way in South 70th Street on property generally located at South 70th Street and Roca Bee Road, introduced by Washington. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6B is change of zone 21022, application of Roca Bee Holdings LTD from AG Agriculture District and R3 Residential District to R5 PUD Residential District Plan Unit Development with associated waivers generally located at South 70th Street and Roca Bee Road, introduced by Washington. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 7 is resolutions first readings, and it's Items 7A through 7M. Section 8 are ordinances first reading and related resolutions, Items 8A through 8I. Section 9 is pending list date certain, Items 9A and 9B. Pending list is Items 10A through 10C.
Okay, so again, our public comment section, open microphone section, is on the second and fourth meeting of the month, so that'll be August 9th and August 30th. I'm going to ask for an adjournment to adjourn from this meeting, and then we'll immediately go into our budget presentation.
Mostly adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded by, introduced by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I please have a roll call vote.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, now, we're going to go into our budget, our budget hearing, our budget presentation. We'll start off by having city staff provide information about the budget. They'll provide information, and then we're going to call all of the items at the same time, which will allow an opportunity for the public to provide feedback. Just as a reminder, all items will be called together. If you wish to speak, you must sign in. If you do not wish to speak, you do not have to sign in. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Please let us know if you are using Star Trans for transportation. Speakers will generally be called in the order in which they are assigned in. Those using public transportation may be called before you. To allow everyone an opportunity to speak, you'll have a maximum of five minutes to make your comments. Questions from City Council members do not count as part of the five minutes, and I'm going to be holding folks to that five-minute maximum. Please try to avoid repeating points made by other speakers. Please consider having a spokesperson for your group. Your group could stand to be recognized. If you sign in but change your mind, you can take your name off the list. Supporting letters and documents can be given to the city clerk, which is zoning right here, and if you have a cellphone, please use the silent mode to make any calls. Thank you, David Young. We'll start off with the information part of our hearing.
Chairman Bowers, members of the committee, David Young, Finance Department. For the record, I want to communicate how the City of Lincoln is within compliance of State Statute 13-506. This budget hearing is being held separate from any other regularly scheduled meetings of the City of Lincoln City Council and is not limited by time. Notice of place and time of this budget hearing and a summary of the proposed budget statement was published at least four calendar days prior to the date set for the budget hearing. The publication date in the Journal Star was July 27, 2021. Any member of the public desiring to speak on the proposed budget statement is allowed to address the City of Lincoln City Council at today's hearing and will be given reasonable amount of time to speak. At least three copies of the proposed budget statement are available to the public and can be found in the back room and hallway areas. A presentation outlining key provisions of the proposed budget statement, including a comparison to the prior year's budget, will begin shortly. The items are delayed after the public hearing tonight. The City Council's proposed final changes will be submitted August 6th and will be available on the budget website for public review. The City Council will discuss the proposed final changes on August 9th. A vote on those proposed changes will occur August 11th. The City Council will adopt the final budget on August 23rd.
And one thing, just to make sure that I'm doing everything appropriately, in accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. Part of this hearing tonight is the 1-6 plan that we have, and so for the record, this public hearing is held each year to fulfill state statutory requirements for the 1-6, the 1-6-year street and highways program. It should be noted that the capital improvement program is a funding document only. Citizens have 10 days from today to submit any statements or exhibits to Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. Therefore, all statements and exhibits received on or before August 12, 2021 will become a part of the public hearing record. These statements should be forwarded to Tim Byrne, Transportation, 949 West Bond Street, Suite 200, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68521. The state statutory requirements ensure that an integrated system of the public roads is provided for the general welfare of the state, counties, and municipalities. The program is administered by the State Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards. The capital improvement program for the fiscal years 2021 through 2026 reflects an average annual expenditure of nearly $48.5 million. This average annual expenditure is comprised of city revenues, such as wheel tax, impact fees, city share of gasoline tax, general revenues, and other revenues such as federal aid and more. With that, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bowers and council members. I'm John Carlson. I work in the Mayor's Department, 555 South 10th Street, and I'm part of the budget team that's been working together with you and with the community and citizens here and residents here in Lincoln to put together the draft budget. The budget team is here. I will be here aldering the hearing. Directors are either here or monitoring, so they'll be available to provide any additional information or questions that we may have during the hearing. I'm going to start just by going briefly back over kind of where we are, which David talked about, but just for benefit of folks maybe watching at home, too. Where we are in the budget process, which started six months ago. Six months ago, we began talking about priorities, we began talking about departments' positions, and talking with council and residents about where we were. Tonight, this afternoon, we're having the public hearing on the proposed city budget. As David mentioned before, any proposed changes due on Friday to the Budget Office, some conversation next Monday, next week, votes on any changes the Wednesday then, and then the council adopts the final budget on Monday, August 23rd, and by state law, that's five days, a minimum of five days, ahead of when the next fiscal year starts. So tonight, or today, I keep saying tonight. So today, we're here to talk about the budget. As you well know, the city budget is the most important policy document that we put together. It's how we, as a community, decide how we will direct our community investments to help build the community that we want. It guides the fundamental work that our city teams do every day to support making Lincoln the place where we all want to live, where we all want to work, and we all want to grow together. To help further define and direct that work, we use five outcome areas that help shape the work that we do and help direct those investments. It's how we as a community decide how we will direct our community investments to help build the community that we want. It guides the fundamental work that our city teams, city teams do every day to support making Lincoln the place where we all want to live, where we all want to work, and we all want to grow together. To help further define and direct that work, we use five outcome areas that help shape the work that we do and help direct those investments. As you well know, we strive to protect the health and safety of all Lincoln families, businesses, and residents here, to grow economic opportunity and our quality of life, to create a more equitable and inclusive community, where everyone feels a sense of belonging and everyone has the opportunity to plug in and share their time and their talents to help make the community a better place to be. Oops, get back here. We want to work together to build a strong and resilient city and we will obviously want to do our work in an innovative and operationally excellent way to provide those services and programs. And so those are, those are overall things that we do with every, every city budget, every process that we do together, but each individual budget is obviously shaped by the events that are unfolding in the community at the time the budget's being created. And there's no more obvious example than that, than the fact that we're today talking about a one-year budget, really the second of two separate one-year budgets in what ordinarily would otherwise be a biennial budget. Due to the needs of the, of the COVID pandemic and the economic impacts surrounding that, we chose to decouple those two budget years, to try and make sure that we were building a budget last year that met those specific needs and a budget this year that met the, met the specific needs going forward. Now, while legally both of these are two separate one-year budgets, it's important that we talk about them in conjunction because they do work as a pair in order to address those specific needs as we move forward. There we go. So just for a sec, let's talk about one year ago, what we were facing. Last year's budget contained, as you well know, smart but tough choices that were necessary to keep services, to keep our, our community safe and healthy, and to address those immediate economic impacts of the, of the pandemic. The city budget was cut four million dollars due to that economic uncertainty. That was a smart and strategic choice to do that in the face of the unprecedented crisis we're facing in our community. However, it also meant that while health and safety services were elevated, important software and technology upgrades were delayed, vehicle replacements to maintain community assets were put off, and positions were left unfilled that provide important city services and programs. So you can see those sales tax projections down for last year, meeting the moment, the immediate needs of the pandemic. The great news is, those smart and tough choices worked. Our community, through efforts like the Economic Recovery Task Force and many others, we used targeted programs and key investments to help the economy rebound. We worked with our partners in the private sector to find out exactly what they needed, how we could be strategic in providing them help, and it worked. But this year's budget now, we need to use that rebound to continue to fuel recovery and to restore those needed services that will continue to move us out of the pandemic and back into the regular growth and quality of life that we appreciate here in Lincoln. So what are the pieces of that rebounding economy that then allow us to make the investments that will continue to grow Lincoln? Well, it's essentially a three-legged stool, although you'll see four pieces of pie, so I've got mixed metaphors there, but essentially the three big pieces are the sales tax being the largest segment, almost thirty eight percent, property tax a close second at thirty three percent, and then all other fees, occupation taxes, and revenues making up that third leg. We talked a little bit just a second ago about the impact of sales tax and the fact that it had dipped, but it has now recovered, which is great to the investments in the community. We take a second to talk about the second biggest piece, property taxes, and to remind folks that at the city, we want to be extra careful stewards of those dollars. Every dollar that comes in, we want to make sure is invested wisely and strategically. We also remind them that we're not the only entity that makes use of those property tax dollars. So in your property tax dollar, the City of Lincoln is sixteen percent of that property tax dollar. And that actually puts, Lincoln as a city, as one of the lowest ranking cities for property tax rate in the state. So again, I think it's, it's commendable for our city departments and the staff that they do work so hard and provide such efficient services. So for that six hundred and forty dollars a year, we're able to provide twenty-four-seven police and fire, streets, sidewalks, parks, playgrounds, libraries, and all the other amenities that help build our economy and our great quality of life. So then we put the pieces back together. Now I'm sort of combining the slides that we've seen previously. We've got the, the funding sources on the, on the one side, we've got the, how the funds are spent on the other side. We put all those pieces together, you can see these revenue percentages and how they're then invested back into the programs and services that people need in order to grow the community, to create this second year budget overall package of two hundred and twenty-four million dollars of investment. And I want to pause briefly on that number for just a minute because we have gotten questions on the increase from the cuts in the pandemic year to the reinvestments of this current year. So if we look at multiple years over time, you can see that that combination actually puts us right on the mark of Lincoln's sort of traditional growth. So if you look at the cuts of the pandemic to the reinvestment of the current year, you'll get an incomplete picture. But if you look at the years over time, you're seeing a traditional two and a half percent growth over time. Pre-pandemic year, pandemic year, post-pandemic year. I think this chart illustrates that. And you can see the comparison of the previous budget years there. And there's kind of a fun fact, or it's probably too small to see, but at the end of the blue box there, it is kind of interesting to point out, the number of city employees per capita is lower in twenty twenty one than it was in two thousand and five. So I think that's a lot of great work by David and his team, doing IT, doing technology upgrades, and people just figuring out ways to do more and do it smarter. So specific now, how, what are, what are the guideposts that we're using to invest that money for the community? Well, obviously strategic investments that advance those priority outcomes we talked about. We want to continue to fuel that economic recovery, commitment to programs that will continue to benefit our residents, and no increase in the city property tax levy. And within that, we have deliverables for the city, right? The whole point of the budget is to take those investments the city wants, invest them in the program services they need, and deliver for them. So again, you've got all these in front of you, people also have them in the audience too, so I don't go over and read everything in there, but there's a significant investment to public safety, additional police officers and firefighters, additional dispatchers, continued monies for important partnerships with the Mental Health Association and programs to create additional crisis response mechanisms. Public health, obviously a big part of that too, to make sure that we're funding not only the pandemic needs but post-pandemic needs as we pull out of the pandemic. A specific for a dental hygienist, which was associated for low-income families that continues to be a pressing need in the community. Vibrant city economy and quality of life, several things in here, and we'll have folks, I know that will come down and talk about it, but one of our critical partnerships is Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. We work with the Chamber to do, to do workforce development, to do business recruitment and retention and expansion, important things to help keep our economy strong. We'll also hear from folks from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, better known as W O A, where we do a lot of job training, a lot of workforce education. Kate Bowles in our office spoke to you previously about the Ticket to Work program that we're putting together, which is meant to connect residents with disabilities to job opportunities. And there are federal funds then available to do that when we stand up that program. So that's another way to make sure that people have access to opportunity in the community. And on the quality of life side, again, making those investments, returning libraries and branches to full service levels, safely reopening neighborhood centers, parks, pools, playgrounds, community rec centers, making, and we, we have actually increased the funding for parks and trails maintenance specifically. And I do want to point out, in addition to more funding for mowing, which is one of the things that I know council has heard and that we've heard from constituents, is they want us to step up mowing in some of the parks and green space areas, they want to have more access to those areas than letting them grow tall. Playground and heart servicing repairs, and even though we haven't talked a lot about it lately, E A B, the Emerald Ash Ward, continues to be an issue in the community, and forestry continues to do that work, removing and replacing and treating trees. Equity inclusivity is obviously a priority for this administration and this council and our community. One of the things this budget does, and Adele Burke in our office I know has talked to you previously about this, but creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion administrator to make sure that city government, as the major organization that we are, can, continues to reflect and meet the needs of the increasingly diverse community that we serve. And again, that goes to the point of not only understanding those needs, but making sure that we work to, again, find ways so that everybody can plug in. Everybody has a voice, everybody gets to understand how the system can work for them and how they can change the system to work better. Affordable housing, obviously top priority for all of us. We have investments to, a policy investments to try and remove barriers for quality infill, tax credits for home buyers, and we continue to work on a rental rehab program to benefit renters, renters also, which are a significant part of the affordable housing picture. Our emergency rent and housing and utility assistance continues to be frankly a model program across the country. Dan Marvin and our partners at the university and the nonprofit agencies have really worked hard to be able to get dollars out to people who need in the community. There continues to be the need, that lincoln dot any dot gov forward slash rent, can't say it enough, anybody that's having trouble, having issues should get ahold of us and we do have funds to help with that. And then aging partners, again, just a nod towards the, the great work that Randy Johnson and their team is doing to create their new center at Victory Park and all of their ongoing programs, like the Neighbor Link program to help keep seniors served. Talked about this just briefly, but again, we're, we are doing substantial investments in cybersecurity and technology upgrades. We see around the country how important that is to make sure that our systems remain safe and accessible for citizens. But we also use those upgrades, those training, making sure that planning and human resources have the support and resources that they need to be able to make sure that our services are cutting edge and providing good turnaround times and good services for people that need to take advantage of the city's services. More funding for basic things like fleet vehicles that have to get out and move snow and move dirt and do repairs at different facilities. And then continuing to update and expand our digital communications, Diane Gonzalez and all the other P I Os and the city teams here that work to make sure that our website, our uplink program, and all the other ways that people can interface with the city to get good information so they're well informed and connected. And last but certainly not least, strong and resilient city. You know, we talk a lot about infrastructure and the way that the operating budget and the C I P work together to provide the, the strong bones that a city needs in order to do the things we need to do. So just some highlights, over sixty million dollars, sixty and a half million dollars to build, maintain, and repair streets and transportation infrastructure. Within that, fifty-five point eight million dollars preservation optimization and growth projects for existing streets. Within that, nearly thirteen million dollars in Lincoln on the Move quarter cent sales tax revenues, and fifteen million dollars in new highway, highway allocation bond funds that were approved thanks to this council. So more revenue, every to get it out there and get it literally onto the streets and into the streets to make those repairs. Two million dollars in sidewalk funding, proud to say that doubles the amount that we've traditionally been able to provide, again, thanks to council action to provide additional resources for that. Two point seven million to expand and maintain the streetlight system. This is not the LED conversion, this is just the fact that Lincoln grows and as it grows, the street network grows and you have to put in new streetlights in order to be able to drive at night. Startran investments, transit, the transit development plans being updated this fall. I know council is aware of that, and that will include the fare free analysis that I know many council members have been interested in seeing the results of that and getting information on that. As that's going on, we're doing bus stop and shelter improvements, replacing paratransit vehicles. And then some behind-the-scenes stuff that doesn't always get seen, but certainly gets filled if it's not there. And that's to add additional mechanics, new maintenance software, and to add new safety training coordinators to make sure that the buses arrive on time and are safe to travel in. Briefly now on the water side, water and wastewater projects, again, they are enterprise funds, they're supported by utility rates. So the rates that people, people pay on those bills are directly reinvested right back into the community to continue to upgrade and expand the system and to make quality replacements and repairs. You can break it down a number of ways, I've broken it down in here just to show that nice balance between growth and the existing city. Twenty-one point four million dollars for existing neighborhoods, twenty point nine to expand capacity projects. And you can see a long list of, of items here that are important, seven miles of water main replacement in existing neighborhoods to change out some of that centuries, century old infrastructure. Neighborhoods are very pleased about that. New growth projects, same on the wastewater side, we continue to do investments in older neighborhoods to make sure that their infrastructure stays up to date, and new growth for the new homes and businesses that we want and over to be able to grow Lincoln. And then even, even on top of that basic pipe infrastructure, we continue to do system improvements and upgrades to make sure that water quality maintained is maintained high and water quantity and capacity are available as well. And the last thing on this page is three point two million dollars for solid waste recycling projects. I know from Donna Gardner, her team that she reported back to you, last year, interestingly enough, was one of the largest recycling years we've ever had in Lincoln. So they continue to do a good job of helping people understand how to process those materials, and also doing a good job at the landfill itself to make sure that, yes, we use the best science and the best operations to handle those materials properly, but also to divert as much material as we can, recycling material and composting material out of the landfill, back into productive service, better for the economy, better for the environment. So trying to provide you kind of some of the, some of the deliverable list there, how that all works together as budget investments to build that better Lincoln for everyone. Last thing I'll say about that, as we talk about growing the city, is one of the pieces that needs to be talked about is the authorization for the additional one percent growth. By state law, state law allows a two point five percent growth threshold for, for communities and cities everywhere in Nebraska. It also allows, by council action, an additional one percent to be authorized to create some headroom if your city happens to be lucky enough to be growing and to be the attractive place that people want to locate in. This is routinely approved by hundreds of Nebraska cities and counties every year. Lancaster County routinely approves it, we approved it last year. It's just important though, because as you can see, if you don't approve it, you can eventually sort of create an artificial cap. And one of the issues can be, if you want new homes and new businesses to come in, which we do, and if you want them to help expand the tax base and provide additional revenues, which we do, you can unfortunately sometimes bump up against that artificial cap. And you could be in a strange situation now where you have new businesses and new homes providing additional revenue, but you're not able to capture those revenues in order to provide the additional firefighters, police officers, parks, streets, and the things that they need in order to serve the growing city. So that's also one of the budget items that's in the package. So summary, as you know, this budget is the way that we directly work with the community to try and deliver for the community. A lot of people within City Hall and in all kinds of different groups and with the city councils work hard to get us to this point. It's a lot of long hours, but I have to say personally that is, it's energizing to be involved in that because people care. People will come down today and people will continue as they had the last six months to let us know what their priorities are because they care about the city that they live in, they want to let us know, they want to provide guidance for us to know how we should be reinvesting those dollars to continue to build the great city that they want. So tried to move through pretty fast, that's kind of a, just a brief overview. Happy to answer questions now, or like I said, we have all the directors and staff standing by and are happy to answer your questions at any point during the hearing.
Are there any questions for Mr. Carlson at this time? Councilman Raybold?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Can you tell us a little bit about when we will hear about the, the final valuations coming in and how that impacts or may not impact our budget at all?
Yeah, and we can also get budget staff up to comment more on that too, but my understanding is the county assessor provides their final, final numbers, I believe on August twentieth. So that will definitely be ahead of the, of the final budget vote, and that's when they offer the substitute resolution that has everything in it, but it has the final budget numbers in it too.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Carlson? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone from city staff that wishes to come up and provide any information before we move into the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll go and move into the public hearing portion. Please, Sony will call folks up, and when you come up to provide information, please say your name, your address, and testimony will be limited to five minutes.
I'll be calling items eleven A through twelve A together. After I call those items, I'll be addressing and calling those that had signed in on our sign-in sheet at the front there. And if anyone has taken any public transportation, please inform me or identify yourself so we can have you come up first, prior to anyone that signed on the list, so. Items eleven A, miscellaneous two one zero zero nine, application of the planning director to adopting the proposed amended fee schedule for application reviews under chapter fourteen point two zero, title twenty-six and title twenty-seven of the Lincoln Municipal Code and amendments to the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan with an effective date of October first, twenty twenty one. Item eleven B is establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln Water System for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements program for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty-two. Item eleven C is establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln wastewater system for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements programs for fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty-two. Item eleven D is establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln solid waste system for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements program fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty-two. Item eleven E is adopting the twenty twenty one, twenty-two City of Lincoln Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program, C I P, one and six year street and highway program. Eleven F, a resolution to increase restricted funds authority by one percent per Nebraska Revenue Statute thirteen dash five nineteen. Item eleven G is approving the updated fee schedule for ambulance services during fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty-two. Item twelve A is amending section eight point three two point one five zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code to increase the occupation tax on refuse haulers from seventeen point fifteen, seventeen dollars and fifteen cents to eighteen dollars per tonne, effective January first, twenty twenty-two. First up, for public testimony, I'll be calling Connie Daly. Next will be Roy Helm.
My name's Connie Daly, forty-six hundred Valley Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I am here to support the investment and hiring a ticket to work person. My name is Connie Daly, I'm the Lincoln District Supervisor for the Nebraska Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired. I'm here to support the budget request for ticket to work coordinator in the City of Lincoln budget. The Nebraska Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired is the state vocational rehabilitation agency for the blind. We are committed to helping blind and visually impaired Nebraskans achieve fuller and more rewarding lives through services promoting a positive understanding of blindness and the potential abilities of blind people. The Ticket to Work and Self-Sufficiency Ticket Program is a federal program designed to provide social security disability beneficiaries the choice, choices, opportunities, and support they need to enter and maintain employment. Importantly, it affords people the opportunity to explore employment without losing other benefits like healthcare. The goal of the program is to reduce and wherever possible, eliminate dependence on cash benefit programs. Social Security disability beneficiaries, including individuals who are blind or visually impaired, lack information, opportunities, and support to enter and maintain employment. The federal Ticket to Work program solves this problem. Currently, there are few ticket to work services to which individuals with social security disability could be referred, and over sixty thousand Nebraskans are eligible but do not receive these services. Ticket to Work provides added value, intensive case management for harder to employ individuals. By building a self-sustaining caseload, a ticket to work specialist will provide valuable job training assistance and meet an unmet need. The cost is one-time and short-term, only the initial startup salary of the ticket to work specialist. A high-quality job can change the life of an individual on social security disability, not only economically, but also in terms of self-esteem and social connections. I urge your support of the ticket to work coordinator in the City of Lincoln budget. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Ms. Daly at this time?
Thank you.
Seen, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you so much for coming out.
Next up would be Roy Helm, Roy Helm is up. Next would be Eve Gersh.
Good afternoon, Roy Helm. I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which as I understand it is Oto and Pawnee Land. I have some concerns with regard to additional funding for our police department. And it's not that I want to deprive the department of funding. I have just, I'm concerned about how it's going to be spent. I think we have an opportunity to provide more public outreach in having trained professionals respond in addition to police officers to some of the domestic disputes and those types of issues. I think we can also consider that in situations where we have traffic issues, traffic accidents or just stalled vehicles, that we don't really need heavily armed police presence to resolve those issues in direct traffic. So I, that goes along with concerns that we need to take steps to demilitarize our police force. We don't need that strong presence of military type presence in our city. Certainly, there may be times that that's warranted, but in most situations, I think it's a little excessive and it can send the wrong message to certain citizens. I tend not to be terribly concerned or worried, but I'm a white male. I don't have to be as concerned as someone who is of color or other nationality. So it can be disturbing, it can be intimidating. I think we need to take a softer and more gentle approach to law enforcement. Along with that, I do support funding for Star Trans. I don't often utilize our public transportation, but do appreciate that is a vital form of transportation for some of our citizenry. It's important for our community. I think we should make every effort to make that a free service. That might make it more attractive for people to utilize, especially when we consider football weekends, different events, maybe on weekends to try and keep people from driving if they've been enjoying themselves at certain establishments around town. So that would require some later hour services, but I hope that will be looked at as part of a public service because it's, it is important to our community and we need to provide some transportation. So with that, that's all I have to say. I do appreciate you listening to me and I also am very mindful of the work and effort that went into preparing this budget and I am, I do hold a lot of appreciation for those individuals investing their time, energy, resources and knowledge. So thank you and I know you'll make the right decisions for us.
Thank you so much.
Up next is Eve Gersh. On deck would be Marjorie Wilicky.
Hello, I'm actually visiting from Dallas, Texas. I didn't mean to sign in on your sign in sheet, but while I'm here, I'd just like to say thank you for letting me visit your city council.
Thank you so much for visiting.
Welcome to Lincoln. It's a lot cooler here.
Good afternoon, my name is Marge Wilicky and I reside at 6750 Shadow Ridge Road, zip code 68512. I represent the Lincoln chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby in this testimony. We are testifying in support of the climate infrastructure investments proposed in the city budget. For context, I will remind you that Citizens Climate Lobby is an international, nonpartisan volunteer organization with approximately 700 supporters in the Lincoln area. Our primary focus is to build political will for federal legislation that is effective in reducing greenhouse gas emissions while protecting the most vulnerable in our population. Even though CCL efforts are concentrated at the national level, we recognize that impactful actions are necessary at all levels. Therefore, we continue to support Lincoln's vision for a climate smart future and the 2021-2027 Climate Action Plan. We appreciate the council's adoption of this plan. Lincoln is leading the way in showing how to, a city can address climate change at the local level and build a more resilient future for residents and businesses. Lincoln does an excellent job of securing funding from outside sources to supplement city taxpayer dollars. For example, an $800,000 EPA grant supports environmental cleanup and building a resilient local food system. A $2.7 million grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation provides Star Trans with three additional electric buses and two additional EV charging stations. Now, on another topic, I strongly recommend the city take advantage of technology that has been existing for many, many years. Lincoln Public Schools began decarbonizing their buildings over 25 years ago. Now the city should do the same. Lincoln needs to decarbonize municipal facilities by investing in geothermal systems. These systems are still at the leading edge of renewable energy. They collect solar energy in the summer as a byproduct of air conditioning and stored away underground for winter heating instead of burning natural gas. The new air park, recreation center and library is a very good start. This work is important. The proposed budget moves the city forward. One of the most critical actions is allocating $1 million annually to the water fund to secure a second source of drinking water. We can't wait for the next floods to threaten once again our only source of drinking water. Thank you for your kind attention. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Next is B. Tim Bornmeyer. On deck would be Jane Kinsey.
Council members, good afternoon. My name is Tim Bornmeyer. I'm the Director of Premier Implementations at Fiserv here in Lincoln located at 1345 Old Cheney. Our company provides technology solutions for thousands of financial institutions and millions of people and businesses all over the world. I'm proud to lead our site right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I also serve as the Chair of the Greater Lincoln Workforce Development Board that represents business, worker and constituency interests in achieving workforce development goals. Our membership includes representatives from technology, transportation, manufacturing and many other sectors. The board implements the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act, which is our nation's central job training program. Our mission is to empower Nebraskans to achieve economic independence and thrive in work and life in partnership with local employers. I support the focus on the workforce development in the city of the Lincoln budget proposal. Workforce development consistently ranks as the top concern among business leaders. The 2019 Nebraska Department of Labor Hiring and Training Report identified lack of applicants and lack of work experience as top concerns of business leaders limiting growth for local businesses. The priority of workforce development is central to building stability and quality of life here in Lincoln. It is certainly a priority in the technology field. Efforts to engage workers and draw on talent are essential to our future gross, growth and honestly, survival. The two specific proposals, a business services representative and a ticket to work coordinator support those workforce goals. The business service representative will provide business professionals with a direct link to job training, tuition assistance, paid internship on the job training and other services provided by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. This liaison will provide hands-on assistance to businesses seeking workers and identifying systemic needs that can be addressed by our program. The ticket to work coordinator will connect individuals with disabilities like back injuries or brain injuries to new employment opportunities. According to the American Community Survey, approximately 11% of Lancaster County residents have some form of disability. For those seeking work, the unemployment rate for disabled individuals is more than twice as high than those without a disability. These individuals have great potential to fill unmet workforce needs and new careers. The federal ticket to work program subsidizes job-seeking assistance for individuals with disabilities. This one-time investment will become self-sustaining through federal reimbursements once a sufficient caseload is developed. Thank you for your interest in, in and support of the workforce development and business needs. Thank you for being a partner to business, especially for your work to support Fiserv and other growing technology industries here in the Silicon Prairie. We urge you to advance these important goals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Kinsey. Up next would be Lucas Sabalka.
I didn't hear what you said. You're next. Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. We have a budget here that's been derived from total agreement between the mayor and the city council, and that's not good for city taxpayers. They will have to pay for a mandate of their money. With no relief from city levy and with no property evaluation of their taxes will rise. Add this to the increased costs for natural gas to heat their homes, electricity to light their lights, water rates that have gone up and gas for their cars since the spring and residents of Lincoln and all of the U.S. are being squeezed. Also, the airport authority has to have their hand in it as well as the Railroad Transportation Safety Board because they want their desires also. And they will be half taxing the middle class. You have this public hearing before the property tax reevaluation is even decided on and people expect that to be a whopping bill too. This is not transparency. The county is decreasing its levy because of the whopping fed federal COVID subsidy due to the wind, when their windfall of $62 million. But the city, in its greedy attitude, is not doing that. Even with the extra $46 million COVID stimulus that this council and the mayor received from the federal government, they continue to raise taxes. The federal government has a whopping, eye-popping $13 trillion in the red. And if you don't think that they're going to have to raise your taxes to match that or to manage that, you've got another thing coming. You're living in la-la land. Besides the insult of a stacked budget agreement, the mayor has a special section called equitable and inclusive city. With her California, Yale and Connecticut ideas, she wants to subsidize housing with a $5,000 gift to encourage the people to live in apartments. Usually, these are sought by new graduates or empty nesters. But she wants the average person to, who is interested in living on the edge of the city in a single-family home, to give up their idea and to have one of the national ideas, which is to combine people in high rises. She has aligned herself with former protesters who belong to Black Lives Matter and who were involved in the destruction of the city during the riots. Since the alignment, they have formed a softer group called Black Lives Movement. This alliance has produced a budget for a diversity and equity administrator at $125,000 a year. We don't need this position. Only 20% of our population are minorities and historically, we have had a issue of getting along and very few negative aspects. These people have been very responsible and contributed to our society. But the mayor prefers her connections to minorities rather than consideration for the 80% of the population that falls in another category, many of whom voted for her. We challenge that this budget has nothing for the middle class, but a tax on their budget are appropriate. Our words are for restructuring the budget in consideration of the August 20 property reassessment. It is time for the minority of citizens of Lincoln to have some consideration with a lower levy and budget restructuring that takes in consideration the majority of taxpayers rather than other groups or this, what the mayor wants.
Up next, Lucas Sabalka. On deck, Ashley Peterson.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you for your service and thank you for hearing from me. I just want to, my name is Lucas Sabalka. I live at 3060 Stratford Avenue. I just wanted to take a few moments to talk about sustainability. As you know, this is my personal issue that tends to take many forms. In particular, it is important to reduce the impacts of climate change and respond to those, but it goes beyond that. And I think that that's captured in some elements of the city budget that I wanted to commend to you. So last year, the city passed the Climate Action Plan. That was a great goal. That was a great direction to be heading, but that action plan required concrete steps in order to realize it. And what we're seeing here in the city budget is some of the first among what will be many. This is where the hard work comes in, where we have to make those decisions and implement that ideal of achieving, of driving towards sustainability. So this is one of many steps, but it is going to require all of this, it's going to require many steps to address climate change. Climate change requires both adaptation and mitigation. Adaptation to reduce our climate emissions as well as mitigation to prepare our city for a different future than we currently have. In the city budget, there are, for example, adaptation measures around geothermal energy. I strongly support that and I echo the, the previous comments about increasing the penetration of sustainable energy production, including geothermal at city buildings. There's initiatives for electric vehicles and electric vehicle buses, electric vehicle charging. Those are in partnership with federal government grants, state government grants. That's a good way of leveraging city funding for additional resources to help Lincoln achieve that vision of sustainability and help us do our part. That's a good way for us to adapt, to mitigate for climate change and reduce our emissions. But we also have some level of change baked in that we're going to need to adapt to. So I'm encouraged to see things like the modification, the floodplain mitigation for dead man's run, the water management plan, more broadly speaking, to analyze what Lincoln has in store in terms of its floodplains. And the good news is that both, both sets of these measures tend to have ancillary benefits as well. as well. When you do things like improve floodplain resilience, you improve the communities around them, and unfortunately, those communities tend to be lower-income communities. So being able to have improvements that both improve resilience as well as help lower-income communities is a great advantage to the city, and it also tends to bring with it higher usability, better economic benefits, more commercial availability, more development availability. So I support these plans, especially when they're partnered with more long-term plans like good use of resources around our natural resources, parks, natural lands, native lands, you know, the Nine Mile Prairie Comprehensive Plan. I encourage incorporation of that into city planning, and it has been. And then I want to just take one moment to expand, to talk about the broader message of sustainability. When we're looking at sustainability, that doesn't just mean climate change. It also means things like water resiliency, so being able to improve the floodplains and flood resistance for our existing water supply, as well as looking at expansion of our water supply, additional acquisition of water for a more resilient, sustainable future is, I think, very important, as well as reducing, I'll call out the lead water, the lead pipe reduction. That's a key element to make sure that we have, that we're protecting our citizens and making sure that our city, our citizens are safe and healthy for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Ashley Peterson. On deck is Lisa Lee.
Hello, my name is Ashley Peterson. I live at 1665 Burr Street in Lincoln, and I'm here as a volunteer for the Neighborlink Program through Aging Partners, and I was just asked to speak a little bit about what the volunteers do as part of that program. I got involved with Neighborlink right at the start of the pandemic when I was at home working remotely and just very blessed to be able to have a job where I could still keep my income and keep working, and I was thinking about ways to help others in my community. And then I saw, I think it was a TV advertisement for the Neighborlink Program, and then went through the process to fill out the application and do the background check. And at the time, I was thinking, oh, I was just going to do this for, you know, a couple months, however long this pandemic lasts, and, you know, just something to do, just while I'm out, while I'm working from home. But it ended up, I'm still doing it now, even now that I'm back to work in person. So some of the things I do with that, they matched me up with a woman who lives nearby. This is an older lady who hasn't been able to leave her house in at least the last year and a half. So what I do, two to three times a month, I'll give her a phone call and I'll stop by her house. She gives me her cards and I go pick up some groceries for her. I get money out and get a money order for her so she can pay her rent every month. I'll pick up some prescriptions for her, and then sometimes we'll have some chats either on the phone or through a screen door, or I'm standing out on her porch and she's inside. And it's nice, you know, I was kind of expecting this program to just kind of give me these assignments where, like, oh, here's someone, go deliver groceries for this person, but they actually match you up with someone who lives right there in your neighborhood. And so this woman and I have been able to develop a relationship over this last year and a half, and it's still going strong now, and I'm going to be getting some groceries for her next week and helping her get her rent paid. So I appreciate how the budget is looking to expand programs like this to help support people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lisa Lee on Deck, Bud Seinhorst.
Thanks. Well, good afternoon. My name is Lisa Lee, and I live at 2835 Ketchera Drive. Of course, thank you for this opportunity to share my support for the mayor's budget, specifically in her investment priorities in the climate infrastructure portion of the budget. I also want to express my appreciation for the mayor and her staff for the leadership they have provided on the city's climate action plan. I also want to thank all of you for supporting it, including Councilwoman Beckeas, who did it when he was still a city county planning commissioner. As a community and as a society, we have struggled to address climate change. You know, it's a very complicated and confusing problem, and the effects, they affect every part of our life. Change is hard and can be challenging. So I just look at the situation very much like the business model of the insurance industry. In my former life, I worked as an insurance, at an insurance company as an internal auditor. My husband Mitch Lee continues to work in the insurance field, is the director of internal audit at Assurity. We both agree the climate crisis is all about assessing and addressing risk. I thought I would just lift up a few, three ideas, which we, I think, would be good to compare to the insurance model. First, I believe the city has already begun that first step, and that's by identifying and assessing the risk of extreme weather events due to climate change. The mayor's climate action plan has identified the need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and provides a thoughtful roadmap to achieve these goals. Second, it is important to mitigate and prepare for these risks, and this is the point we're at right now. Just like in the insurance industry, where they work to reduce the number of accidents and minimize the impacts, we need to do the same. As we know, safety features like electronic stability controls and seat belts add to the cost of vehicles, but they also save lives and they reduce the cost of significant injury. We need to take a similar, we need to take similar actions by purchasing more of these electric buses we've been talking about, installing geothermal versus traditional ways of creating heating and cooling our buildings. And finally, I encourage the city to recognize the important role they can play as an influential stakeholder in the broader public policy discussions addressing climate change. Specifically, I urge the city to consider supporting a federal policy to put a price on carbon and return the money to individuals as dividends. The city could join other influential stakeholders, such as the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, to advocate for these market-based solutions. For example, if we had a federal fee on carbon today, we would not be having this debate right now if we should invest in more electric buses. If the cost of fueling a diesel-powered bus is increasing, the cost of an electric bus becomes more economical and makes more financial sense. The dividends returned to the individuals would help offset the additional costs they are going to experience while we transition to this new carbon-free economy. So I realize that this suggestion might seem a little outside of your role, even as city councilman, but I think, just like the insurance industry, you could be an advocate for good government policy that helps meet your goals. As a volunteer with the Citizen Climate Lobby, we could use your voice. In the meantime, thank you again for this opportunity to share my support for the mayor's climate infrastructure budget.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bud Seinhorst on Deck would be Kathy Kay.
Good afternoon, council members. Bud Seinhorst, president and CEO of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. Since the city, or in the mayor's office announced their budget and made it public, members of Leba have invested a great deal of time and effort to review the budget all individually. We had a committee that took a look at it and met with different city staff members, and we want to thank David, John, and Sheri. They came to our office. We spent about two or three hours talking through the budget, answering questions, and just having a nice, open discussion about the budget. We really appreciate them coming in and doing that and spending that time. We continue to stand here as a voice of small business in Lincoln, and we believe in government transparency. We support our police and public safety, which are vital for our community and are making sure our community and officers are safe at all times. Regarding public safety, we agree with having the funding necessary to support building of our police force, along with providing the resources necessary for our first responders to protect and defend our community. Public safety is a cornerstone of government responsibility, and we want to make sure this is and always will be a priority in the city of Lincoln. Transparency in government is important to gain the trust of the taxpayers. We, as taxpayers, expect our government to be mindful in the budgeting process and provide open and honest information with regard to the budgets as they are presented. In our discussions with the city staff, we all agreed that there are opportunities for more transparency in the budget and the accumulation of the large funds that we see in the various fund balances throughout the budget. Some even commented that we're actually a very rich city. Furthermore, providing more outlines of the changes in the budget throughout the year when the budget is amended by the council and/or mayor, I think, are vital for transparency. When we look back at the budget that's adopted by the council, and then we look back at actual numbers, there's a lot of discrepancies, and we feel like there's an opportunity to communicate with the citizens to understand what those changes may have been. One area we all agreed on was this greater transparency in the budgeting process. One of our big requests moving forward is to increase that transparency as the budget is presented to the community and to the people at large. We saw, as I mentioned, a lot of those departments have large carryover budgets, some of those into the six, seven, eight-figure numbers, and I think those are important for us to look at and find out, what is the purpose? And that was one of the questions we asked with regard to transparency. Are they saving up for a large purchase, or are there upcoming expenses that are going to happen? So, for example, in the mayor's recommended budget in 2019, 2020, it indicated the water fund would have an ending balance of over $44 million, and yet that balance would drop to $39 million. Just kind of an explanation of what those projects would be, I think, are good and valuable to the citizens. This year, property valuations are estimated to increase in our community by roughly 11% on average. During this time, when property values are going up and our community is still trying to recover from the pandemic, this should be a perfect time for the council to respond accordingly with a budget that is more sensitive to the taxpayers of our city. For instance, lowering part of the city's property tax levy, using it to increase the general fund levy seems to be a little bit tone-deaf with what our business owners have encountered over the last year. It would appear the taxpayers of Lincoln should have at least had a levy reduction from the bond levy. And if you look on page 36 of your hymnals, I bought a copy of that here, and you look at the actual general fund levy from 2018 to now the current budget that's being presented, we're looking at about a two-cent increase on the general fund levy, although we like to tout that we've kept the main levy the same. We've dropped some of our bond levies, and so we've just reallocated those to the general fund levy. I hope the council will take time to really take a look at a six-plus percent increase in the budget and ask, is this really the right time for these kinds of increases when businesses and families are still trying to get back on their feet in a post-pandemic world? I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thanks so much. Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Kathy Kay. Next up would be Erin Chambers.
Good afternoon, council members. I am Kathy Kay. I'm the CEO of the League of Human Dignity, located at 1701 P Street here in Lincoln. We're a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to serve individuals with disabilities. We're concerned with the rights and quality of life of people with disabilities. We believe in emphasizing likeness, not difference; ability, not disability; normality, not abnormality; and integration, not segregation. We work with people who have disabilities to promote independent living and ensure social, economic, and political equality. We're in support of the transit budget, which includes a new safety training coordinator, additional mechanic, additional funding for bus stop improvements, including amenities such as benches and shelters, and vehicle replacements, including replacing three paratransit vehicles. Individuals with disabilities utilize the paratransit and the regular transit systems. Often, individuals don't drive due to disabilities such as using a chair or being vision impaired. The transit system in Lincoln is a lifeline for these people. It helps them to work, it helps them for social interactions, and also get to medical appointments. The proposal in the budget to replace older buses, as well as replacing three paratransit vehicles, is important to not only have the newer buses, which are more accommodating for individuals with disabilities, it's also important to have adequate numbers of accessible buses, to have bus drivers trained in the proper way to tie down wheelchairs so people can utilize the transportation safely, and also so many elements of the transit budget directly impact the people that we serve at the League. The bus stop improvements are crucial for people who need a place to sit because of physical disabilities and to be protected from the elements while they wait. We are contracted at the League of Human Dignity to be the administrator for the paratransit services. We screen individuals with disabilities, and if they qualify, we provide them with a paratransit service pass. Over the past year, we have averaged around 30 a month. So as you can see, our numbers are really high, and I don't pretend that we serve everyone with a disability. These are the only ones that come to us. We feel the proposed budget is a reasonable request to help individuals with disabilities to be able to independently live in the community that they choose. The League of Human Dignity asks the city council to support the transit budget with the additions that will help not only people with disabilities in our community, but also many other citizens of the great city of Lincoln. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the transit budget. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
You guys are a quiet bunch. Thank you.
Erin Chambers. Up next would be Wendy Bertschel.
Chairperson Bowers, members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Erin Chambers, 3515 Everett Street here in Lincoln. I currently serve on Lincoln's Community Forestry Advisory Board, but I'm here speaking as a member of the public. I'm not a tree professional. I work at the university as a staff member, but a few years ago, I started studying trees on the side for fun. I know, I know, but thus the T-shirt. I'd like to talk very, very briefly, hopefully, not about the budget already under review, if that's all right, but about future considerations. I believe you received a letter in the mayor's office as well from the community advisory, Community Forestry Advisory Board, kind of containing stats about the state of the forest and some recommendations for the future, including in the short term, that we look for ways to reinstate funding for contractual tree work, and as part of a future capital improvement plan, providing funding for developing a written community forestry management plan. Some cities call it urban forestry, but I like that we use the word "community." It makes it clear that it belongs to all of us. The forest belongs to all of us, and we use the word forestry because we're not just caring for individual trees, we're caring for a forest, we're growing a forest, and when that forest is cared for properly, it benefits all of us, not just in environmental ways, but in social and economic ways as well. Altogether, Lincoln's public trees provide our community with nearly $12 million worth of benefits annually, and that's just the public trees. Trees are infrastructure, and like other public infrastructure, they need regular maintenance, but they're unique. They're the only kind of public infrastructure that I know of that increases in value over time, like aging wine. As a tree grows larger, right, its benefits increase exponentially. So a tree this size, roughly 24 inches in diameter, provides more than five times the benefits of a tree this size, say, six inches in diameter. We want to keep our trees healthy as long as possible, which means pruning them on a regular basis, ideally, like at most, like every 10 to 12 years, but we're not there yet. I think right now, we're averaging, the city's averaging between eight and 30 years, depending on the tree and how serious the, you know, the necessity of pruning is. And as you know, besides the threat of the Emerald Ash War, we've had some huge storms in the last couple of years, and Lori Gruber and her team in the Community Forestry Division have made a hugely fantastic effort to take care of all those trees that were damaged in the storms, but we're still facing a general backlog. At one point in time, when I say it was like 2004, specifics are in the letter because I'm going to forget them, there was $100,000 set aside in the city budget for contractual street tree pruning and removal, and that went away, but reinstating that funding would go a long way toward addressing the backlog. The letter goes into more details about developing a management plan, but the way we envisioned it on the board would be that it would be really guided by the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the newly adopted climate change action plan. Climate action plan, thank you. Stick "change" in there. There's actually a similar push going on in Omaha for a plan, too, so it seems like a fortuitous time to start moving forward on that. There are so many important things to invest in as far as, you know, balancing the needs and desires of a city like ours, but I hope that as we go forward, you'll continue to keep our forests on your minds as we plan for a healthy and vibrant Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Wendy Bertschel. Next up would be Luke Pelts.
Good afternoon. How is everyone?
Good.
On a beautiful
On a beautiful, cool day in our neighborhood. I'm Wendy Burzl, President of the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 100. Joining me today is our Luke Pelz, our Vice President for Economic Development. And we are here today on behalf of numerous business leaders, stakeholders, to express our support for the proposed budget allocation to the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. In the 30 years that I've been, can you believe it's been 30 years? I can't either. That I've been here at the chamber, I can, I can say that I have never been prouder of the staff that we have at the Chamber and Partnership and Convention and Visitors Bureau and the work that we're undertaking. We received countless requests from our peers for information on programs, initiatives to emulate our success. We have also been recognized by numerous national organizations, the International Economic Development Council, American Chamber of Commerce, and the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce as, or excuse me, U.S. Chamber of Commerce. The Lincoln Chamber of Commerce has recognized us too. You might well imagine. It was the best one. Anyway, and also a local, the Nebraska Department of Economic Development has also recognized us as well. You gotta give me a little latitude. This might be the last time I come before you. All right. 10 minutes or 20 minutes gonna have? Okay. Yeah. You know, I credit the public-private partnership with the City of Lincoln to much of this success. Having the support and the working relationship with both the mayor and the city council is imperative to the thriving and welcome, welcoming community we have here in Lincoln. Our mission is to facilitate economic development projects, foster collaborative and meaningful conversations, to lead programs for business retention, expansion, workforce development, innovation, and entrepreneurship. And I believe that we've been delivering on that mission. I want to thank each and every one of you for this partnership and your work to make Lincoln a place where businesses grow and workers succeed. And finally, I want to thank you for your consideration for the, for supporting the funding for the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. Before I turn it over to Luke, our relatively new Vice President for Economic Development, I would like to make one comment and thank Director Lopez and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department for their work throughout this pandemic. Their efforts to prevent the spread of the coronavirus helped protect our business community and resulted in our ability to reopen for business in a safer and healthier manner. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wendy.
Absolutely. Mr. Pelz.
Dear council members, my name's Luke Pelz, and I am Vice President of the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development located at 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 100. I'm here today to support the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development budget allocation. L-PED is essential to the city's Lincoln, to the city of Lincoln's economic growth and vitality. And behalf of our numerous business leaders and stakeholders, I'd like to thank you for your support of this important organization. Business and industries ranging from technology to agribusiness to healthcare to every field in between, support the partnership between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. This true public-private partnership demonstrates that with collaboration and vision, we can really add value and bring to life the growing, thriving business sectors that are the backbone of our vital, our economic stability in our community. Over 120 L-PED member, L-PED investors represent major employers in the city. They contribute the funds needed to match the city's contribution to continue to do the important work of business retention and attraction, workforce development, and entrepreneurship support. Just a few examples of our many successes this year include serving hundreds of jobseekers in the pandemic via our drive-through career fair, which I will also add was copied by pretty much every state in the Midwest. So, but we were the first to do it. So, we take credit for that. We helped launch successful new businesses like Politics, a technology company for managing information for pets. We are also, we also help businesses identify and get access to funding for expansions, potential expansions here in Lincoln. And we've also seen a lot of success in our Lincoln Manufacturing Class, where individuals with zero manufacturing experience go through the class to get a basically an introduction to the manufacturing industry. This program has been very successful for not only our employers that are hiring the folks, but for those individuals that are hired. They're going from working maybe not a job at all to working multiple jobs. Now, they're, they're in a, you know, more consistent work schedule, earning 18 to upwards of $26 an hour with full benefits. So, we've, we've seen a lot of success with that and continue to expand on that as, as we speak. I assure you that, that people in every one of your city council districts and businesses in every neighborhood of the city have benefited from the work of the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development. Our goals in the partnership with the city are to act as a clearinghouse for economic development, to foster collaborative and catalyzing conversations in the economic development work, and to lead programs from business retention and expansion to workforce development to the, to the startup ecosystem that's thriving down, down in our Haymarket area. I just wanted to thank you for your ongoing support, and I ask for your support of the funding allocation to the, to L-PED as we move forward.
Are there any questions?
No. Thank you.
And thank you, Wendy, for the past 30 years for everything that you've done for our city.
Next, Tracy Core on deck, Kerian Wilson.
I don't know why, but on this side, I'm so much more nervous.
So different, right?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, the Chair, and then all the members. I'm Tracy Core, and I live at 1001 South 37th Street. I'm here today in support of the proposed 2122 city budget and all the good things that will deliver for our community and specifically for our neighborhoods. I've been involved with neighborhood associations and neighborhood improvement projects not as long as Wendy, but almost, for almost 20 years now. Neighborhood leaders appreciate the work that city staff, the mayor's office, and the city council do to make sure that residents are engaged and the budget reflects community feedback. The 2021, the 2122 city budget does a great job of providing investment in the important services, programs, and infrastructure that neighborhoods need to continue to be great places to live, play, and raise a family. Yes, there are small fee increases to help provide funding for those improvements. And yes, property assessments have gone up to reflect that Lincoln continues to be a very desirable place to live. But frankly, that's a positive thing. And I also want to point out that that's something that the city doesn't set. A home is the largest investment most families will never, will ever make, and steady growth continues to build value for families who live in them. I fully support reinvesting the resources from our rebounding economy into the community assets and improvements that will continue our pandemic recovery and grow a thriving future. It's really important to not just talk about property values increasing, we also need to understand and appreciate the tremendous value in community services and improvements that we enjoy when we pool those tax resources together. Specifically, this budget supports strong neighborhoods by doubling the investment in sidewalk repair and maintenance. It increases funding for parks, trails, and playgrounds that neighborhood families and kids depend on for safe, healthy activity. This budget improves neighborhood safety, not only by hiring more police officers and firefighters, but also by providing additional money for mental health support and other public health programs. The investment in Startran will provide safer, more dependable bus service for neighborhood residents, including students and those who depend on transit to get to work. In addition, we are funding important neighborhood services like libraries, pools, community centers, and senior services as they safely reopen and return to normal levels of operation. That's a lot of bang for our buck. Regarding infrastructure investment, the modest utility fee increases benefit both older and newer neighborhoods, and they also help build the new homes and businesses that a growing city requires. My understanding from LTU is that this budget provides over seven miles of water main replacement in older neighborhoods. That's really important when you realize some of those water mains, water main lines are over 100 years old. Lincoln Water System is also replacing dangerous lead water service lines in older parts of town that pose a health hazard to kids and families. This budget also includes funding to increase water quality and finish well-filled repairs and improvements to help keep our water supply safe and flowing. That's a lot of value to support strong neighborhoods in our community for our small increase in fees. I sometimes hear people say that lower-income families will be hurt by even small revenue increases, and I agree that we should be mindful of that. You should also consider, however, that those same families may very well want to contribute that extra dollar a month to ensure that their neighborhood park, their neighborhood pool, or their neighborhood library stays open and well-maintained. They may not have the option of being able to pay for membership at a private pool, park, or playground. Instead, they depend on being part of that overall community who contribute together to maintain quality neighborhood services. The basic premise of any city budget is how do we work together to identify and fund investment in services, programs, and improvements that support our community? I'm happy to say that the 2122 budget does just that. Thank you for your service and your hard work on this budget. I urge you to pass it with the current levels of investment across our community. Your support of the budget will, in turn, support Lincoln's steady growth and high quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or, yeah, any questions from the council?
No questions, but I would just like to take a moment to thank Commissioner Core for her service on the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for a number of years and for being a strong advocate of Lincoln's neighborhoods.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah. Kerian Wilson. Next up, Danae Kalkowski.
I will be expecting an applause at the end of this. Yeah, long time no see. I feel like I'm showing up for like a pop quiz after missing school for eight months. So, I'm gonna use my cheat sheet tonight. Also, I want to say, I have never heard a stronger endorsement for a diversity and inclusion administrator than what I heard earlier when someone said that we don't need that because minorities only make up 20% of the population. Yikes. Awesome. Yeah, it's really good to see everyone. I'm glad everyone's, oh, let me take this off so you can see the stash. I'm really happy to see everyone's healthy and doing well, and I'm very happy to see that we have someone new at the table. Congratulations. Yeah, so I was gone for eight months. I went home to deal with family emergency and then kind of took some time to deal with some of my personal health struggles. In doing so, I think that I matured a lot for eight months. I've come tonight, not necessarily to push any agenda regarding the budget in specific, but more so to speak broadly on kind of what I've seen in Lincoln. And so, continuing from there, things have changed since I've been gone, right? New city council member. In addition to that, a new police chief, the diversity administration member is really awesome. And then I also noticed that in the budget, there is a new full-time position for a golf laborer, which I'm not exactly sure what a golf laborer is. But then I also saw there was a reduction of a sexual assault officer, which seemed kind of contrarian to me. But honestly, that feels like a bad joke about 2020, the year we just went through. Like, I, these are not the kind of things that I hope to see coming back to my city. I know it seems like a simplistic matter, but it's those small issues that really stand out to people like me who can't delve into the complexities of tax code. I can't delve into the complexities of budget allocation. I'm not sitting at, behind desks, studying these things constantly. I don't have the time for that. So, it's the small issues like that that stand out to me. That should be a concern for our community. We need to make sure that we are allocating resources where resources are needed most. And I don't know that making room for a golf laborer at the expense of a sexual assault officer, which I know that's not exactly how budgets work, I don't think that that's appropriate. I know it's a small thing, but I just wanted to touch on that. Some other things that haven't changed, I saw that we're hiring five more police officers, and I'm not trying to go on a anti-police tire, whatever, but blink twice if the police unions are having you guys continue to hire police officers. Additionally, I saw that we're adding an SRO, which I do support the SRO program. What I don't support is the indiscriminate effect that it has on minorities. And I was looking at the city charter, and I noticed that Article 10, Section 2 states that Lincoln has a responsibility to seek out discrimination and get rid of it. So, it's kind of questionable to me that we haven't done so with the SRO program. In addition, other things that haven't changed, I've noticed that evictions are continuing. The moratorium that just expired is going to lead to more and more evictions, and I know that evictions were occurring during the moratorium, which is also concerning. We need more protections for leases, and then additionally, tenants who are being responsible, who are doing a good job, need to be rewarded for that. And then affordable housing, I heard you all talk about affordable housing, which is absolutely awesome, but I just want to point out that oftentimes, affordable housing is related to the area mean income. So, when we talk about affordable housing, it's not based off of this broad mean income, right? It's not based off the entirety of Lincoln, it's based off specific areas. So, let's say we build a large apartment complex downtown, and we say it's affordable housing. If it's based off the area mean income with, which cordons off an area of downtown, it's not really affordable housing for a lot of people in Lincoln. So, I just think it's important to acknowledge exactly what our language means, right? When we talk about affordable housing, we can use the blanket term that we hear people use all across the country, but at the end of the day, like Lincolnites need true affordable housing. This is hard. And then I wanted to say, I hear so many people talk about taxes, they don't want their taxes increased. But when you look at this labor struggle that we're having in our country right now, young people are not making enough, not even young people, a lot of people aren't making enough money to pay their bills. And people don't want to pay taxes? Like, imagine what it's like to be under the burden of taxes for those people, and yet they're still willing to pay because people care about you. People want you to have access to resources you need. It's about compassion. It's about caring for your American neighbor. It's about caring for, you know, I don't know how to explain that. It's so bizarre to try and explain compassion. But I'll just summarize this real quick. I know I've taken a lot of time, but I just intend to email all of you and speak with you individually. I've realized that over the course of the past year, I may not have done the best job of voicing my opinions. I wasn't really aware of this system, and so I kind of just came in here banging my fist on the counter, which I'm still doing now. But I look forward to reaching out to you and talking with you about specific issues and like, let's get down to business, because at the end of the day, I know that you all truly want a more diverse, equitable Lincoln, and so let's work together to make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming out.
Yeah, it's really good to see you.
Danae Kalkowski. Up next would be Delray Hirschman.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105. Appearing today on behalf of Southwest Folsom, just one of, one of many clients, I think, that benefit from this, but I am coming up here today to speak in support of the moderate rate increases for the water and wastewater systems in our city. They're necessary to help, as Tracy mentioned, not only fund water and sewer maintenance, repair, and replacement in our existing neighborhoods, but it also supports new extensions within the growth areas of all quadrants of our city. Developers are moving forward with investment in the new growth areas around our city that have been identified for that purpose in our comp plan and are shown in the capital improvement program for future improvements. So, the rate increases are really crucial for the city to be able to keep pace and fulfill those requirement, or those goals that are set out in that capital improvement program that many, many investments are made and rely upon. These growth areas are critical for continuing to provide housing and business opportunities for our community. I think over the past several years, we can all agree that we've made really great strides with our water and sewer funds and being able to keep up with the growth in these areas. And they're not usually, when we're growing into new areas, we're usually able to work through those water and sewer issues. And some of these rate increases over the last few years are really a big part of that. So, we'd like to kind of keep the momentum going and recognize that we have these continued increased cost and needs. Just as an aside, I also obviously support the investment in the city's transportation system, and we are very thankful for the Lincoln on the Move funds that are being invested in our city streets today. And we would obviously challenge the city to continue to look for additional funding for our streets, because that tends to be our piece of infrastructure of greatest challenge when we're going into these new growth areas. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, Delray Hirschman. On deck would be Brad Mullin.
Good afternoon. I'm Delray Hirschman, 521 11th Lane here in Lincoln. I have been a member of the Pedestrian Bike Advisory Committee for, since 2002, and I'm currently the Chair. I am an advocate for multimod, multi, multi-modal transportation for children walking safely to and from school and for Lincoln's nationally-recognized trail system. I support Mayor Gaylor Baird's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. The proposed, proposed budget maintains the level of service for trail maintenance so The proposed budget maintains the level of service for trail maintenance so that we can continue to be used, they can continue to be used year-round for commuting and for physical activity and recreation. The proposed budget increases funding for repair and replacement of sidewalks in our community to support walkable neighborhoods. The proposed capital improvement program provides $150,000 for repair and replacement of our trail system. It is estimated that Lincoln's trail system is used more than a million times a year. It is important to continue to invest in repair and replacement of the trail system to keep it safe and accessible for all users. The proposed capital improvement program also provides funding for making improvements to the recreational trail system in Wilderness Park and for extending the multi-use trail system as our community continues to grow. The next new trails are the Fletcher Landmark Trail in North Lincoln, which will be located north of Superior Street between North 14th and North 27th Street, and the Wilderness Hills Trail in North Lincoln, which will extend south and west from about South 37th Street and Yankee Hill Road through newly-developing residential areas. Thank you for support of our walkable neighborhoods and our community.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Brad Mullin.
Good afternoon. Brad Mullin, President of ALO Communications. I better put my glasses on, I've got some notes. 330 South 21st Street, also one of the owners at Canopy Street Market at 140 South Canopy. Thank you. Number one, I'm here to support the budget and support the process, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. I think it roughly reflects the inflation that we'll see this year. It's proper to continue to invest in the city, much as ALO has to in our fiber networks and our investments. It's also kind of interesting that the budget is roughly equal to what we've invested in our fiber network here. Number one, workforce investments. I think we have some challenges there, and we will continue to have challenges, and I am very supportive in the investments there, as well as in the police and public safety. Finally, and maybe most importantly, the technology investments. I think cybersecurity, public safety, information systems, and communications are all very important. And lastly, I do support, I added this on at the end, is LPED. ALO will be doing some interesting projects with LPED, so I encourage you to continue to support LPED. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, I would offer Mr. Carlson or Director Young an opportunity to provide
John Carlson with the budget team. Don't really have any specific rebuttal, just thought we'd come up to see if there are any additional questions or concerns. We took some notes, and we can always provide information to in the weeks, week ahead.
Are there any questions? Sorry. Councilman Schob?
I insist. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question from one of you, just to, if you could remind us, remind me, the allocation amount for Neighbor Link, again, to make it sustainable over the years, if you don't, if somebody knows offhand. I was, could not remember, and I totally support the program. I was pleased we had a testimony.
So I'm gonna see if there, I'm gonna pencil that in.
If not today.
I bet Director Randy Johnson is close by and paying attention.
If not, just, I'll follow.
And so I'll hedge a little bit. See if there's any other questions and see if Randy will come in, and yeah.
Not a problem.
We'll find out.
Thank you.
Is he ready?
Yeah, he's here. There he is. I feel better for not remembering. Here comes Director Jones. Thank you. And also, Director, you can get back to us as well.
Jones, Director of Aging Partners. Gosh, I'm sorry, my notes here, I don't, it's somewhere around $23,000 a year, and that was added this year.
Yes.
Last year, it was paid for by CARES Act money.
Mm-hmm. I remember you saying that now.
And we believe that this year we'll be able to use recovery funds for it. So the need for tax dollars for it will come next year.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, thank you, Director Jones. I want to thank Ms. Peterson again for being here, and thank you for sharing that story. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question would be general, 20,000-foot level. I wanted the timeline again on when we were voting, when we can make more changes and things like that. Maybe we should hold off on that till after Councilwoman Washington's questions asked? So it's the last thing?
Go for it.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question, too. People came forward and spoke early in the hearing about transparency. Now, I believe the budget process is very transparent, but they each had the same suggestion that we hold off on our budget until after evaluations, county assessment evaluations were done on properties. And I was just curious, if we were to do that, how mess, how out of legal are we going to be? Because we have a commitment, a legal commitment to having a budget on the books.
Right. So the timeline that we actually see up in front of us does actually accomplish that, so we'll know final valuation numbers prior to the actual adoption of the, on the 23rd of the budget. And I will say that budget staff, and you know, Sherri can speak more to this if they need to, but they're in constant contact with the assessor's office, and they're getting the preliminaries. So essentially, the finals of the results, if you know, the assessor does their preliminary evaluations, you know, and those come out in May-June, people file protests that are interested in that, or they provide additional information. So that number begins to get increasingly more and more accurate, because eventually you're just down to sort of the protested numbers, and then they're finally putting those final numbers together. So the projections that we have in front of you that were used to build the budget are very, very close to what the actual valuations will be, and if anything, they may be slightly under. So if you remember from last year, when we did the projections, they ended up being approximately $300,000, $400,000 under, and we set that aside in a potential contingency for pandemic use. So I think that will, very likely be the same situation this year as well. When they're targeting that, you're going to be within a couple hundred thousand dollars, and the council will be able to decide what they want to use that money for ahead of the actual adoption on the 23rd.
Thank you for making that clear.
Yep. Any further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions or no further discussion, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. May we please, any discussion on that? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote.
Becky's?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We stand adjourned.[1764.63]